For these sales as well as staff, uh, there it's. There's a lot of duplexes in this area, so a couple of the comparables are duplexes. We did find a single-family residence um that was smaller than the subject property but did have some uh lower level finish that we put in uh to use as a comparison. These uh these sale prices range from one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the price uh excuse me, in the sale date range between two thousand nineteen and October of two thousand twenty. Felt the most comparable because it was also a single-family residence was comparable number three. Currently, the subject property is assessed at one hundred and nineteen dollars a square foot. The cost range indicated an evaluation between a hundred and five and a hundred and seventy dollars a square feet. The market indicated a range between one oh five and one ninety-five a square foot. Can see where the subject property is located in pink and the comparables are in blue. The subject property which was comp three, which was the most comparable is directly across Seventy-Seven Street. The next slide was just to give you an indication and how we came up with our market adjustment that we applied to all properties in the neighborhood. And that is all that we have.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Yep, go ahead.
Question for staff. Uh, the applicant in here on her PT seventeen, she said she's disabled pursuant to social security. Does she, is she currently qualified for the municipal property tax reduction for elderly or disabled?
I believe she did not.
No, I'm not.
And she's.
Does she qualify?
No, I'm not sixty-five in my income level.
Do you have to be sixty-five? I thought it was sixty-five and or disabled pursuant to social security.
No, I I checked. It's by income level.
Okay.
It it's like twenty-nine thousand four hundred has to be your income level.
Okay, so you don't qualify for it.
I don't qualify, no.
Any other questions uh from the board for staff? If not, um, Ms. Marshstead, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to explain on the uh the split foyer, that had three bedrooms. And I assume it probably had a dishwasher and a garbage disposal. My home is strictly handicapped. Um, I do have photos if I can, if you can see these somehow.
Sure, and and I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm just trying to clarify something.
Sure.
So it looks to me like your requested values and the assessor's recommendation match exactly. Is that correct?
I was visually impaired, I'm visually impaired and I prepared the document without the assistance of my fiance.
Okay.
So I grabbed the wrong colored piece of paper and entered the the numbers. That was an error on my part. So I entered the numbers wrong. I took the current, what they want for the assessed valuation instead of the year before.
Okay, so let me get this straight first.
Sure.
What's the requested value that you're putting on the land?
Okay, for the land, I am for the land, I'm pretty putting thirty-six thousand one hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, and then for the structure?
One hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to, one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay.
For a total of two hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you. Now would you go ahead and continue with your presentation?
Sure. Um, on the multi-level, there was another bedroom, that was a three-bedroom. And I will first explain with my house, there is no dishwasher, there is no garbage disposal. Um, there are cutouts underneath the kitchen sink and the stove is separated, if I can show you the pictures. And in the bathroom, the bath, there are no cupboards underneath the bathroom sink as that is also lower. My kitchen counters in the kitchen, instead of being thirty-six inches, they're thirty-four inches for the handicap, so um, I bought this house primarily because I am visually impaired, I am blind in one eye and there's it's slab-on-grade, no steps, so no fear of falling. But I, it's not a fair market house for somebody to come in and want with no dishwasher, uh, no garbage disposal, the lower counters. And again, the bathroom is wide open underneath the kitchen, underneath the bathroom sink so that a wheelchair can get up in there, so there's, when you see the pictures, you'll see I have my cleaning supplies in just tubs. So if I could show you somehow the pictures of, okay. Okay. This is just a picture of the length of the the cab or the the kitchen cabinets or excuse me, the counter. There should be thirty-six inches as in a normal house. These are at thirty-four, so they are two inches lower. This is an indentation where somebody can roll into their wheelchair and she has a cook's, there was a cook's top, um, cooktop stove positioned here so that there is not one whole unit of a oven, a stove, and a microwave. This is just the kitchen top, cook, cooktop area. This is just another view of the cutout where a wheelchair can roll up into it and you can see that the, there isn't much storage underneath um, for pots and pans. That it is considerably lower than a regular kitchen. That's, I don't, that is the top of the cook stove. Again, there's no oven, there's no microwave. It's just the cook stove. If you roll across the kitchen, there is an oven and it's not a normal-sized oven, it is smaller. And I did have to replace this within four months after I moved into the home as it was inoperable. Uh, there was no disclosure on this house as the individual. Uh, she was uh in a wheelchair, but she had passed away and nobody had been in here for seven months. Her son was executor, but there was no disclosure, so I didn't have any idea what worked and what didn't work. So I, I did make a lot of uh repairs on the home. Okay.
All right.
You have a, you have a question?
May I interrupt you?
Yeah.
When did you purchase the home and and would you like to dis, or would you disclose what you paid for the home?
I paid um two hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
And in what year did you purchase the home?
Twenty nineteen. No, twenty eighteen, I'm sorry.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, sorry, I get my years mixed up. Okay, that's just a picture that I did have to buy a microwave because again, the stove.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I think.
I show you one more.
One of the commissioners is prepared to make a motion.
The motion if you, if you would.
Okay.
So.
I would move, uh, she did request to be thirty-six one-ten. I would move though the land state to thirty-six one-oh-five, uh, lowering the home to one seventy-six two hundred for a total of two twelve three-oh-five.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners.
We're gonna vote, but I, I think you find it fair.
You call the roll, Sherry.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move on to our seven-twenty hearing. Greg and Marsha Ruff. Carla, go ahead.
Our next appeal is parcel number two-eight-one dot one-seven dot zero-five dot zero-one-nine. It's located at seventy-five sixteen South Ridgestone Drive in Sioux Falls. It's a single-family property built in two thousand eight. It has two thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet, lower level finish of two thousand one hundred and forty. Uh, total assessed value of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand seven forty-two. We do have a recommendation uh because of the comparables that we use to uh equalize uh the quality or the grade of the property. So the recommendation is to lower the house value from six hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty-two down to six hundred and sixty thousand four oh eight for a total of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand seven oh eight. The comps that we used are before you, ranging between the years of two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen uh with a sale price ranging from seven hundred and seventy-five thousand up to nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Felt the most comparable to the subject property was comp one, sold for eight hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred in March of two thousand nineteen. Same in age, quality, after the adjustment, and then uh size. Um, our recommendation for the price per square feet is two hundred and thirty-two dollars a square foot. The cost ranged between two hundred and fifty-one and two hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. The market was indicating um of range price per square foot of two hundred and sixty-one to three hundred and twenty-eight dollars a square foot. The subject property is listed in red and the comps are in blue. They're all in very similar type neighborhood as the subject property. And I just wanna note that I believe it was the lower level finish we had. That's where we adjusted our grade for the lower level finish and not for the total um, structure grade. It was just within the basement finish pricing.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the board? If not, the appellant, um, please come up. Sir, if you could just state your name and address.
Greg Ruff, uh, seventy-five sixteen South Ridgestone.
Thank you, and go ahead with your presentation.
I appreciate the recent change, uh, dropping the assessed value to six sixty-four oh eight. I still think that's uh quite a jump. It's, that's still an increase of twenty-three and a half percent over what it was the previous year. I think what I disagree with is the comps that Lincoln County's using. Looking up the comp information on Zillow for the previous sales of these, uh, the most favored comp, which is the one on Letigo Trail. Uh, when you look through the sales information, first of all, it's built on a greenway. Uh, it talks about having Brazilian oak throughout. I don't even know what Brazilian oak looks like. Uh, it says it has a fifteen-foot-high stack stone fireplace. Um, a large upper deck with another deck underneath it. Uh, luxury wet bar in the basement that seats six. Uh, my backyard looks on the neighbor's backyard. I have some hickory flooring, mostly carpet. I don't have fifteen-foot ceilings. My wet bar in the basement is just a couple of cabinets and a sink against the wall and it seats zero. Looking at the second comp on Burley, one thing I noticed is it has a core four garage. Uh, we thought about having a core four garage, but once we saw the price, we took that out. And the third one is the one on Slay Creek Trail. Uh, once again, another house built on a greenway, cherry wood floors, coffered ceilings, two rear decks, each with another covered deck underneath, a fancy wet bar, a built-in sauna. Again, I have no greenway, some hickory flooring, mostly carpet, one small deck and a bar area. I just don't see how my house can be compared to these. Uh, they're just totally different. It's just, it's not comparing apples and apples. I went through the property sales on the assessor's website and found some what I call comparables with the same square footage, roughly the same sale date, style, et cetera. And I came up with four what I think are comparable. If I could show those. Uh, this one on Deer Park Drive, it sold in June of two thousand twenty for seven thirty-nine. It's a fifty-one hundred total square feet, twenty-eight hundred square feet on the, on the main, which is roughly the same. The lot's just a little bit less. Uh, the assessed value on it is five twenty-six and that's a hundred and eighty-six dollars a square foot. Uh, the second one that I found was on Prairie View Court, sold in March of two thousand twenty for six hundred and seventy thousand. The main square footage is twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is just a little bit less than ours. However, the lot's twice the size of ours. And uh, that comes up to a assessed value of a hundred and ninety-seven dollars a square foot. The third one that I found is on Barrington, sold in January of two thousand nineteen for six seventy-five. Uh, twenty-five hundred square feet on the main. A little smaller, lot's about the same size. Fourth one I found sold in November of two thousand eighteen for seven forty-two, and this was on Prairie View. It was built in two thousand, the main square footage is twenty-six hundred, which is a little smaller than ours. And the lot is thirty-one thousand, so it's three-quarters of an acre, um, about fifty percent bigger than ours. And the assessed value per square foot is two hundred and two dollars a square foot. What I think is fair is five hundred and sixty-six thousand for an assessed square value of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars a square foot. And my comparable range is a hundred and eighty-six dollars to two hundred and seventeen dollars per square foot.
Built in two thousand seven?
Mine?
Yeah.
Eight.
Two thousand eight?
Yes.
And the roof, did it sustain any hail damage in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen?
That was replaced.
Replaced?
In uh what was it, like, twelve, thirteen, whenever the hail.
Whenever the big hailstorm went through.
Yep.
Uh, wood siding? What's your siding? What's the siding on?
On the, on the back, it's hardy plank.
Okay, no problems with that?
No.
Basement, is it wet, dry?
It's dry.
Okay. Any other, any other structural defects, or is the gist of your argument the comparables?
Just in my arguments, comparables. We live in, in uh uh Prairie Hills, but actually it was Boulder Ridge at the time. So they were covenants in place, so the majority of the houses on our street are either have all brick or stone stucco, so they're all very similar on the outside, at least on the front.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, further questions for staff? Yep, go ahead.
I know you rattled off four properties. Were you, sorry. Bad audience. Uh, he rattled, uh, represented four uh properties. Were we able to confirm that the assessed value is what he presented?
I was able to confirm his most comparable property.
Okay, and that is the current assessed value for the property?
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, consider a motion.
Uh, I apologize, I have to, I have to take that back. Um, I'm mistaken, it's the, the value that I'm seeing there is not, so it must have been one of the other ones that I was looking at. It's not if, you said that the one on the left is your most comparable, correct?
That's his subject.
That's his house.
Oh, good. Now I see, now I see the difference. That makes sense.
It just sometimes we've had in the past where someone has pulled.
Some of the parcel numbers were off and the, it's a couple of the, one of the addresses wasn't right, so I was having troubles getting that.
These were the same ones that I brought to the uh meeting in Sioux Falls.
That is correct.
They're the.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Can I see the uh assessment screen, please, for that property?
Jake, you want to switch back?
There already has been a market adjustment, correct, on both the land and the structure? Of six percent and nine percent?
You agree with the land value, sir?
I'm not arguing the land value.
There's no defects though in your home currently? New roof?
I'll make a motion. Uh, value the land at one hundred fourteen thousand three hundred and value the house at six hundred twenty-five thousand.
For a total of how much then?
Seven thirty-seven.
Okay, I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Sherry, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
I think about no, just because I think that's a little too big of a jump, too big of a step down, I guess. So the motion did not carry.
May I? It was an awful big increase in the first place, so it was a twenty-eight percent increase in the price of the house the first time.
Well, I wanna get you some relief, sir, but I'm also, you know, I'm pretty practical in the sense of you gotta get three votes, right?
Right.
Get off the dime. So I'll make another motion here. Value the land at a hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and value the structure at six forty.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, a motion and a second. Sherry, will you call the roll, please? Commissioner Erns?
Oh, somebody wanted to, there was some discussion, I think.
Maybe, if it's really, really brief.
I will, I'll try to be, and I don't, I, not trying to be unsympathetic to everyone that comes in front of us, but it's not our mission to just do relief or, we're meant to equalize and we need to have rational reasons for doing so. Um, otherwise, we're just shifting a burden to somebody else that didn't come in front of us. Cause we don't generate any additional, reduce any of our revenue for the purposes of the county by changing these valuations. It's just shifting. Um, but the, our point being is, or my point being is that we need to equalize it. Um, and I still don't quite see why there's a a, a misrepresentation of what your property is worth in comparable to, to the comps that our staff has presented, so that's my statement. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, since I brought the motion, I'll just respond.
Yes.
My rationale is, of course, um, he's brought in some compelling comps. The assessor's office has some compelling comps, and you gotta balance the two. And, uh, you know, I don't always uh see things the way the government does, so I'm trying to balance the two, balance the equities.
When we reduce, as you said, Commissioner Poppins, the bounty gets very low. Your school district is the one that uh gets the biggest hit of all.
All right, I'm gonna go have the question called, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No, but it doesn't matter.
Congratulations, anyway.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
Next item on the agenda. Cameron and Nancy Carlson scheduled for seven thirty. Go ahead, Carla. I'm not wearing big earrings tomorrow.
Okay, so our next appeal is parcel number two-eight-one dot thirty-one dot fourteen dot zero-one-nine. It's located at seventy-two oh four South Burley Circle in Sioux Falls. It's a single-family residence um owned by Cameron and Nancy Carlson. It was built in two thousand sixteen, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet, four bedrooms, three plus bathrooms. It does have some lower level finish of two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. We have a current assessed value of one million two hundred and eighty thousand two thirteen. Uh, the S, the recommendation by staff, assessor's recommendation is no change. Um, the property is below cost and market um in comparison with some comparable properties that we have on our next slide. The comps that we have are from the two thousand eighteen sale year to the two thousand nineteen sale year, ranging from one point two million dollars to two million three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Felt the most comparable was comparable number one to the subject property. Age, grade, size, were all very um similar to the subject. Our subject property is currently being assessed at two hundred and eighty-six dollars a square foot. The cost comparables ranged from three oh one to three hun, three hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. Our market is indicating three hundred and thirty-eight dollars a square foot, all the way up to five hundred and eighty-one dollars a square foot. You can see where the subject property is uh located in comparison with the comparable properties, very similar um neighborhood. Some additional pictures that we uh brought forth to you um just for informational purposes. These are the comparables, back pics with the sketches. One of the arguments, and I shouldn't, and I don't really wanna call them arguments, but one of the concerns uh at local board was the inspection history. Uh, we did inspect the home in two thousand seventeen. Um, they appealed that value in two thousand seventeen and it was advised by staff to go out and re-inspect it. At that time, in July of two thousand seventeen, they did refuse us entry during that recommended inspection. And I wanted to show you our assessor notes where they did refuse. We did try back again a, a cou, couple different times um after that, and then they still just refused any type of inspection again.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for staff? If not, the appellant's here. Uh, you can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, first of all, about the reinspection issue, um, the, in March, um, I took the person through my entire whole house. And every room, we discussed the whole thing. They added, he told me he was gonna add nine hundred square feet to the lower level because the two furnace rooms had epoxy flooring on the floor. It's paint that is thicker with the chips of um glue inside of them. And I said, I don't, that is not a finished, those aren't finished rooms. So I don't see how you can add square feet. I don't think that's really legal to do that. And so that was a problem. The other thing is, we then gave our um blueprints to the county board and we, they couldn't find them again, but we did do it again. And um, they, the square footage is incorrect. Um, we have thirty-five ninety-two on the upper level and not thirty-eight fifty-five. And we have two thousand on the lower level and not two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. So that's the first problem.
That's thirteen hundred square feet difference.
The second problem is that um we feel the comps are very un, inaccurate. The first one that you're comparing is Colebrook and that is my cousin's house. And she, um the people that sold it to her were a bank walkaway. Um, they left with their clothes and she bought all their furniture and everything in their house. So that is why she paid that much, which she did overpay, but you haven't assessed her house at one million one twenty-two. So even you all know that it's not worth what she paid for it. But again, like I said, she bought everything in the house. Um, this, the next one is the Brent Ridge one, and that is a total outlier. This person paid way too much for the house, two point three million. If you look at, even you have it assessed at one million three hundred and fifty-eight. So you all know that it's not worth the two point three, but once in a while, there's an outlying uh house that somebody just overpays for because they want it. Again, the first one is our house. Um, and And so we found some other comps that are really more accurate. Our house, no wait, I'm not done. Our house has gone up, since we first built that house, it's gone up forty-three percent in value, according to you, which we could never sell it for that. Our house has all ceramic tile on the entire first floor, except the one very small bedroom. The ceramic tile was five dollars a square foot. That is it. Our house is basically a box. I have nice furniture and a couple pianos, and that is why our square footage is bigger. It has nothing, we don't have this outrageous, all these other amenities like in this Brent Ridge house. It's nothing like our house. All these wet bars and, you know, the five stall garage and outdoor kitchen, all that. We have nothing like that. So these are the ones on Zillow that we feel are more accurate toward what our house is. And I think in statistics, it's really common known thing where you take a whole group of homes that are relatively close. A lot of these are a lot bigger than our house. These are all the sale prices. They have more bedrooms and more bathrooms than our house does in many cases. And they're actual sales of normal people buying a house. They're not a really crazy outlier. And in statistics, you always take the top ten percent, the bottom ten percent out, because they're usually rare issues, and you take the average. And that is what we think should be done instead of just the highest, most outrageous house that was sold. Also, the lot, are we on the lot?
Yeah.
The, our lot has, I can barely breathe in this mask, I apologize.
I'll do this. This is our lot.
This is where our house is.
Here's our, here's the aerial view. And you can see, like, right here, it's swamp. So thi, we're gonna be talking about this next lot here next. But our, literally, our lot is, one-third of it is swamp, so if you go by five dollars a square foot, it's about twenty-four thousand square feet of lot, and the swamp's about eleven thousand. It's literally a swamp. I'll show you.
That's what it looks like.
So literally, our lot's about twenty-four. So you can shave some off of there. Our square feet is, square footage is three hundred, too high on top, and so total of thirteen hundred square feet. That's wrong. We sent that to, I don't know if you have a copy of it, but we actually sent our blueprint in. And the square footage is way off. And that alone is seventy-five grand, at least for the top floor, just counting the top floor alone. And the lot, we figured at least thirty-five thousand. It's too high. And we'll talk about it in the next one, too. That's it.
Did you share these documents with the staff that you're showing us tonight? You said you sent something in?
Yes, we sent our blueprint, which was prepared by a third party. We didn't do it.
Late yesterday, they did email Ethan with the-
No, March of twenty seventeen. We sent a letter and an email. We have proof of it as well.
And the blueprints?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why we were surprised that it was on this one again.
Yeah, we, we had to deal with this the first time again. Here's, I want to just, okay, go ahead. This is just our house, and then our lot will be next, so.
If I could clear up the blueprint discussion, it was discussed at the local boards that the square footage of the house was wrong. They had the blueprint along at local boards, and we requested a copy of it. They said, first they gave it to me, and then they took it back and said that they would send it to us, and we, we hadn't received it until they called last night at quarter to five. And then afterwards, sent it to us, saying that they thought we already had it. But we had just requested that a month ago at local boards.
We have proof. We sent this in March of two thousand seventeen. So we figured that you had it.
Our, our house is what it is. I mean, that's the size of it.
Yeah, that's what it is.
I have a question. I have a question. Got it. Everybody's got their story about when it was sent in. Now that we have got the information sent in, has the staff had an opportunity? I'm gonna guess not, from the look on their face.
We're down here.
Right, to recalculate it. So, you know, yeah, you thought they had done the homework from four years ago. I got it. They are, you know, dealing with thousands of parcels. You guys sent it in last night. They haven't had a chance to take it. What's the difference in square footage between what they have officially and what you guys are saying?
Three hundred and something on top and nine hundred on the bottom.
Thousand on the bottom.
About thirteen hundred total.
Okay, so what you're telling us is, what you're telling us, sir, is the official records are thirteen hundred over what your blueprints say. And in order to prove that up, you did send the blueprints in, albeit just last night.
No, we sent it in in two thousand-
In two, twenty seventeen, but I think four years have gone by.
We have proof, like, in email sandbox, you know what I mean?
I completely believe you.
You all need to talk one at a time, or I'm in a cloak with a discussion.
I got that. You sent it in twenty seventeen. I think everybody's admitting it got lost, you know, nobody's looked at it since last night. But you're saying thirteen hundred extra square feet, right? Okay.
Well, here's ten, ten sales that are actual sales on Zillow, where they actually count the actual square footage of the actual house. Those are the price ranges, and they're right around a million, and ours is one twenty-three, and it's smaller.
All right, Commissioner Poppins, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The question for the, uh, couple is, back in seventeen, we were, we did an appraisal. We did an adjustment, and it sounded like by direction of the board, we had asked you to, to rea, re-enter the property or try to. In short words, can you say why that was denied?
Well, they, they were just there in March, and then they added on two thousand extra square feet. And I told them, I don't think that's legal to do that. I really, I feel like, to, I feel like I'm to the point where I'd like to go further to the state and talk to them about this, because I just don't think this is fair. And we're just trying to be honest and fair. We have the numbers, and we were, I felt that was very, um, we were forthright and had people over, and they treated us very unfairly. And so, being that they had already been there, we felt like they, why would they need to come back?
I think the answer to that is, there's a discrepancy, and we needed to try to clarify that. That may have done that, but we're at this point now, I-
There was two assessors in our house for, like, half an hour.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the floor on this, um, appeal. Is there a motion?
Well, I got some concerns that there, does the staff dispute their claim about the extra, the square footage issue?
I can't disclaim it until I can review the blueprint.
Okay. And were there inspectors there in March from your office?
In twenty seventeen, yes.
In March of twenty seventeen?
Correct.
And have any of our staff ever physically entered their house?
Yes.
When?
March of two thousand seventeen.
Okay, but not recently. Just that was the last time, March twenty seventeen. Okay, and so at that time, they could have had the opportunity to check this square footage issue?
That's what it was about.
No, they did.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what they were there for.
They still got it wrong. I don't know how they came up, they just said that because we had the core, or the, the paint on our floor, that it was nicer than any other furnace room they'd ever been in, or something like that. And it's not finished.
So, in our field, oh, sorry. Yeah, I just really want to get this moving, because we're getting way behind on time.
I'll take less time on the next one.
That time's already gone. When I say we're getting far behind, we're getting far behind, so I want to move this issue along. What are the thoughts of the board? What do you guys want to do?
I want to, I want to make a motion to table this until Thursday at three thirty and allow this issue of the square footage to get figured out. And everybody's got to comply with everybody. They want to go into your house, you let them in. They want blueprints, let them have it. Full transparency, both sides, everybody.
Okay.
Both sides, everybody. That's my motion.
All right, so with your motion, I just want to ask a question before I ask for a second. Do you have the availability to do this before Thursday?
Tomorrow at eight o'clock?
Madam Chair, I just, I, I don't, I want to second this motion, but I want to urge caution. I don't know that we can-
Everybody stop. I'm asking a question of our equalization office.
Has 401K meetings at eight, so.
You have the availability to do it tomorrow at eight AM. Appellant, are you available at eight AM to give access to your property?
No, I have 401K meetings all day, and I'm having them from my home, and I cannot be interrupted during that time.
So it's not gonna happen? Is that what I'm hearing?
We have, we have boards on Thursday.
We have boards on Thursday. So it would be tomorrow, if at all?
Anytime tomorrow?
I can't. I have 401K meetings all day. I mean, you can't just pounce this on me.
Okay. So that's not gonna work, to do anything like that.
And nobody else from the office staff can go over there and do it at their time?
She's not available.
She's not available at any time.
Correct.
Well, I think you've got to make a decision, too, so.
Well, can't, is there a problem with, like, calling our builder and getting the blueprint and looking at that? I mean, it's a third party. We're not even in it.
My understanding is the blueprint has been provided. Is that the case? Okay.
I mean, like-
Then we're gonna close the issue. We could table this, and the board could look at it again tomorrow after our equalization office has had a chance to look at the blueprint.
I'm willing to offer a second to the motion to table it.
Okay. Um, is that a motion? Is that a second?
I have a second for the motion to table it, till our staff has had a chance.
Excuse me, until our staff has had a chance to review the blueprint and verify whether or not they agree or dispute it.
All right. I have a motion and a second to table this. Sherri, will you call the roll?
So we're tabled until Thursday at two thirty?
Yes.
Yes, that was the motion.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Motion carries. Next item, twenty-nine, scheduled for seven forty. Carla, go ahead.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight-one dot three-one dot one-four dot zero-two-eight. Located at seventy-three oh one South Elmstead Circle in Sioux Falls, owned by Cameron and Nancy Carlson. It's a bare lot. It is, uh, two, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four square feet. We currently have it assessed at one hundred and forty thousand, six seventy. The staff is recommending no change to value. The lot is assessed, uh, less than the comps. The recent sale on the home, or, excuse me, on the lot, occurred in May of two thousand sixteen for two, a hundred and ninety thousand, and we currently have it assessed at one forty. You can see some comparable lot sales that have happened within the same neighborhood as the subject property, ranging from one hundred and twenty-nine thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand nineteen. So fairly recent. The price per square foot for the subject property is five dollars. The cost of the comparables is between five and five fifty, so they're all equally assessed. The sales price is indicating five dollars and eighty-three cents to eight dollars and twenty-seven cents a square foot. You can see where the subject property is located in comparison to the comparables that we provided for you. One of the main arguments in regards to the, um, bare lot during local boards was a drain, drainage easement. I have highlighted in yellow, the drainage easement provided to us by the surveyor runs on both sides of Lot twenty-nine, which is where their home sits, as to Lot four, or, excuse me, Lot twenty-eight, which is the bare lot. Shows you some flood risk, which they all are very similar in the, the risk area. Didn't feel that was any type of determination with the, the assessments for that. So the assessors are recommending no change to the current assessed value.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for staff? If not, the appellant can go ahead and give their presentation.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so here's an aerial view of our lot. And there's actually that line running through the middle. I'll come back to that. So basically, we're at the bottom of the hill, so all the water runs right through our backyard.
That's through the extra-
It's like a river, where this, right here. So it just, really doesn't leave a whole lot of room to build a house. The back part that you see, that's literally in the swamp as long, that's our house to the left that we were just talking about. That's actually swamp as well. So I thought, you know, to be fair, five dollars a square foot, I'm sorry. So if you have, start out at twenty-eight thousand square feet, literally ninety-four hundred of it's unusable, so I figured if we did two, two dollars a square foot on that, you're, you know, you're probably looking at eighteen thousand square feet.
And the comparables are all perfectly flat lots that are not in the granite.
The other lot that you're comparing it to is literally our neighbor, and he is, he's not in the swamp, and it was like, it was the last lot on the neighborhood. So here's a literal picture of what our lot, our house looks like during the, during a ice storm. So a lot of it's unusable, literally. That is actually swamp back there. So my one thing was, so there's the math on it, roughly a hundred and twelve thousand. Think you're at, like, one forty.
There's a picture of the lots that you compared it to.
All right, any questions from the board for the appellant?
I do have a question.
Uh, Commissioner Poppins, you have the floor.
Uh, is there a drainage easement on that property where the, you indicate the water goes?
Yeah, there's a giant culvert that goes right through our yard, goes right out the backyard.
That's in your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
So there's a, do you have a copy of the easement?
No, 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 that's, that's not the one. The other one is where you're, that I'm indicating, that you're indicating coming across.
Oh, that's just the, that's the low-lying area where all the water-
This one is what I'm asking about. There's no, that, we're on this, on that diagram where the twenty-eight is, there is no drainage easement at that, so that isn't usable.
It's not usable.
There's no drainage easement.
There's no drainage easement.
No, but I mean, that's where all the water-
It can be altered, is my point, so.
These are the lots that are prepared, though. See how perfect they're all flat?
I think you've answered the question.
I have a question.
Uh, Commissioner Schmidt, go ahead.
It says on here, on our records, that you guys paid a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this lot five years ago. Is that correct?
It's behind our house. That's why we paid for it more than it was worth, because we wanted to buy it.
We paid one ninety, I believe, for the other one.
We couldn't sell it for that.
And now we have it assessed for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And in two thousand fourteen, it was assessed at two thou, at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And then we made a market adjustment for, in two thousand eighteen, to a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
That's about.
Just this time, it went up another twenty-five percent, another twenty-five percent. I mean, it's, like, so outrageous how much it's gone up, and we haven't, I mean, it's not worth that. It, you couldn't build there.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Schmidt?
Well, I'm just thinking, you guys paid a hundred and ninety for it. You must have had some idea of the value at the time that you bought it. Because that was five years ago. That would have been in two thousand sixteen.
We came from a neighborhood where we had really bad neighbors before, so.
Buffer.
Wouldn't be a problem.
Wouldn't be a problem.
Was worth anything to not-
I'm going to go ahead and, uh, close the floor and ask for a motion.
I'll get it off the floor. I'll leave it, recommend to leave, uh, leave as the, uh, equalization recommendation.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll, please. Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. Sherry, go ahead with item 30, or excuse me, Carla, I don't know why I called you Sherry.
See you at 3:30.
It's been a long day.
Our next appeal is parcel number 281 dot 77 dot 01 dot 006A. It's located at 7604 Ridgestone Drive, South Ridgestone Drive in Sioux Falls. It is a single-family residence, uh, built in 2006. It has 4,957 square feet, eight bedrooms, six, uh, and a half bathrooms. It has a lower level finish of 4,211. Uh, we have a current assessed value of 2,000, 2,166,757 dollars. This was an appealed value back in 2019, um, for which two years we held that, uh, county board value. It says on here, our board value expired, and then we also had a 6 percent market adjustment in the neighborhood. The assessors are recommending no change to the current assessed value. Uh, we do have some comparables that we provided for you, um, with, in the 2019 to 2020, um, sales years, ranging from 1.4 million dollars, um, up to 1,895,000 dollars. The subject property is, uh, most comparable, we felt, to comparable number two. Now, keep in mind, we're not using that comparable to value the home, just as a comparable to show you what, there is a market for the higher-end homes. Um, there is a detached garage that was built, um, on this, with the subject property, um, a detached garage of 1,900 square feet. We show that, just so you can see that why our price per square foot is more than the comparable properties, because it has additional structures that are also being assessed within that 1.8 million dollar value, so that brings the price per square foot up. So our subject property is currently assessed at 371 dollars a square foot. The cost is, um, of the comparables is ranging between 263 and 328 dollars a square foot. Our market range is between 290 to 445 dollars a square foot. Our subject property is located on the map in the southern part of, uh, the map, and our, we have two comparables. Um, comparables three, two and three on this map. In our third comparable, we had to go reach out, um, you know, outside the neighborhood, um, just for the sake of having the third comparable. Detached garage built in 2016. And that is all I have for you to, on this appeal.
Any questions for staff from the board? If not, um, is the appellant here?
Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, hi, oh, Tammy.
Are you Tamara?
Yeah, Tammy Veek, um, I live at 7604 South Ridgestone Drive. Thanks for letting me come talk to you. Okay, so when I was at the municipal board last month, one of the, um, members said two things to me. He said, um, you know, we employ these people to figure this out, so we do have to have a measure of inherent trust in what they do, and I get that. But I would like to counter that, as I've had time to think about it more, by saying, I think the formulas and stuff that they use probably do work for 95 percent of the homes in Lincoln County. But my home is definitely an outlier, just like the old bell-shaped curve we all learned in statistics, right? 95 percent under the big curve, and then you got those little tails, right? So I found my own comparable. It was funny, because it was in the Argus Leader just a week before I went to the municipal board, and I placed document, face up, okay. So this was, um, Meadowlark, 409 East Meadowlark Trail, just sold in March of 2021. It's amazing how close it is to my house, um, as far as dimensions. My home actually has seven bedrooms. We haven't gotten that fixed, even though I spent two hours with Carla two years ago going over my appeal last time. Bathrooms, nine and eight, garage stalls, six. My, I have eight stalls, because I do have that detached garage. That is a four-stall garage. They, their house, three fire, that's always on. I find my information in the parcel browser. That's where I go looking to see what other homes are appraised at. Um, 1.8 acres. Mine has two acres. We both have a theater. We both have a great room with a 20-foot ceiling. We both have a 40-foot swimming pool. Their house was appraised, as you can see, 1.676, and in March last month, it just sold for 1.1 million, so what your appraisers came up with is 576,000 off. And then my home is almost another 500,000 above their home, which only sold for 1.1 million, and they're very similar. Mine is newer. I will admit that, but clearly this home has had some work when it has all that on there. So that's my first point. Okay, um, second point. The, um, the same gentleman on the board said, "I would love to see what an independent appraiser says your fair market value is." And I said, "I'm going to get someone to go and do that." So I asked a realtor from Kerwin Williams, uh, Kellen Williams, whatever, the one that's all over now. I asked him if he'd come in and tell me what he would list my house for today. And he came a couple of weeks ago and walked around my entire property. And he did this, he took about two weeks. He, he agreed to, um, it goes, I don't know, if you want the bottom, 1.841 is the number that is important, but you, I don't know what part of that you want to look at. He looked at my property and he said too, he needed to, he goes, "If I can walk into a 400 or 500, 600,000 dollar home and tell them pretty much right off the bat what I think I should list it for," he said, "Yours, I'm going to have to talk to some people and look at it closer." So he took about two weeks, and he printed this up for me, so I was, I asked to keep it the same, because I just still don't think it's, um, fair market value, and the one last little thing I would add, I mean, there's clearly a subjective part to all of this. And, because my home went from, in 2018, the proposed assessment, when they did the market adjustment, was 2.8 million. When I sat down with Carla two years ago, we, um, we talked for two hours, looked at stuff, and brought it down to the current appraisal. I mean, it's an 800,000 dollar change in two, it, two years, and if I hadn't made a phone call, I'm sure my house would have still been at 2.8 million, so that's done.
Any questions from the board? I have a question. Is there living space in that garage?
There, there's a half bath. I don't know why it says it has a basement.
I, I was just, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a half bath.
Looks like a really nice garage.
Right, it matches my house, and it's right next to another home that faces the street that way, so I was also being kind to my neighbors.
Gotcha.
I feel like I keep paying for that brick exterior over and over.
That was a lot of our discussion a couple of years ago.
Can we go back to the appraisal page, please?
Which one?
Jake, can you pull it back to our page? Thank you.
Do I need to move that off there?
No, he just needs to hear me. Jake?
Oh, out there. I didn't-
Switch it, please. Thank you.
Were these comps used in your market analysis as well? Some of the values seemed very familiar.
Um, yeah, you could, no, not, not all of them. I know Colebrook definitely wasn't. The Lindcrest was.
So two of the three comps are the same. The adjustments that-
The plus, the minus.
Yeah. Are different then.
The formula you guys use.
Exactly. We don't make bedroom adjustments. Six-bedroom versus seven-bedroom. We don't lump sum a $10,000 bedroom allowance.
Okay.
That's just not what our appraise-
Let me go back to our worksheet.
Praising. That one?
Yep, that one. Thank you.
So no disagreement over land value, correct?
No, right.
And you're at 1.64, and the county is at 1.83.
I don't know what you mean.
On structure value.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. Mm-hmm.
Did you say Kerwin Williams, 1.84 or 1.64?
He did 1.84.
Okay.
Question.
Total.
So-
Whole thing.
There's a tennis court and a pool on the property. Do those affect the value at all? And how so?
Um, the bath, uh, the pool is, do you have it?
The tennis court is 41,569 dollars. Uh, excuse me, the pool is 41,569 dollars, uh, tennis court. I just double-checked to make sure that that's what the tennis court is. The tennis court is, uh, that's a little hard to break up, because it's a, it's just assessed as a concrete pad.
Okay, sure. So do the comparables have those amenities? Just
Let's see.
Curious.
Lindcrest has a pool.
Lindcrest did have a pool. And her, uh, her BPO did indicate whether there was a pool or a tennis court, I believe, at the very bottom somewhere.
Yeah, he did, because he added 25,000 for the pool and 25,000 for the tennis court.
Which are two of our three comps as well, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're using the Keller Williams 1.64? That's where your 1.64 comes from?
No, I came up, I said, when I went to the municipal board, I said, "I would like to leave it." I wasn't even, I wasn't asking for a reduction.
What does Keller Williams say?
Well, he says that the total, he would list it today for 1.84 million.
She wants it rolled back to the 2020 value. That's her request.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not going to have the exact numbers, but I, I believe that there's a compromise in this, as this is unusual property. To think that it's still same value as 2020, the market has changed. I would say that on a property, the best value, it's probably a half the increase, 3%. So if we did a 3%, and I thought I had the number, but I may be wrong, um, leaving the 328, 395 on the land to, um, 171, basically 1,000, or 1,702,000 dollars on the house. Does that get us to roughly 230,000, somewhere in there? Carla, Ethan? For giving it-
So I took the 2020 and 2019 county board value of 1,971,255. I multiplied that by 3%. I came up with 2,30,392.65. I took out the lot value of 328,395 to come out with a structure value of 1,701,000.
That was off.
977 dollars.
With those numbers, that would be my motion.
Second.
When you got that many commas in it, it's not the track.
So, my understanding of the motion, the motion is to leave the land at 328,000.
395.
395.
Ethan?
And the house would be at 1,701,977 dollars.
Is that right, Ethan?
Correct.
Nope, hang on.
I apologize. I cleared out my calculator here right at the worst time.
My second was based on what you said, not what you calculated.
Exactly.
So we're clear here.
Yeah.
Can I give you a number?
I, I'm looking at a 3% increase, not a 6% increase.
One, 3% increase on just the structure?
Yep.
The structure would be 1,692,145.
Okay.
And then the land value would be 328,395. Is that, are you coming up with the same number?
I would rescind and-
No, we didn't adjust the land 3%.
I'm trying to get us through.
Just the structures.
Okay.
I rescind my second.
And, and the new number, Carla, for the house is 1,600?
I have a motion, I think, that is on the table, and correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so the motion, as I'm understanding it, is that the land would be at 328, 395?
That has not changed.
Okay.
Carla is trying to give me the number that I'm trying to get to.
Yes.
Okay, that's 3% on the structure.
Just the structure.
And the land would say that are 328, 395. That would be my motion then.
Second.
Are we, you, Ethan, are you telling me we're all wrong again?
No, I'm just trying to verify.
Okay. Thank you. Sherry, do you have it, the numbers?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, I was writing quicker that time.
Very good.
I think you have a motion. Do I have a second?
Ethan?
Second.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Erns with the second. Sherry, call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
We're voting to ladies.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hang on, Madam Chair.
Question, I'm just trying to answer a question.
I just said, what is the number you're voting on?
Yeah, the total is 2,020,541 dollars.
Does that answer the question?
Kate? Yeah, please don't interrupt the whole call anymore.
Thank you, sorry. My apologies.
We're reducing it from 1, 2,166,757 dollars to 2,020,000? Dollars?
30. 2,030,372.
I just need everyone to be clear of what they're voting on, yep.
2,020,551.
So that's a reduction of how much money?
551.
140,000.
I thought I was trying to make it simple. My apologies, Madam Chair.
I understand.
2,020,551, so we get a reduction of 146,206.
Yeah, it's an overall reduction of 146,206 dollars.
216?
206 dollars.
I will do better, Madam Chair, next time. Sorry. I all know my numbers.
Is everybody clear on that on the board? We know what we're voting on? Does everybody agree with the math?
Just Sherry, would you please read what the land value is for the record and what the-
Land value is 3283, 32,000.
No, 328,000.
328,395.
Structure value. That's what we're voting on, or that's my motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Did you vote?
I couldn't remember any-
Uh, an hour ago.
Yes.
I've got a Y there, so, yeah.
I voted yes an hour ago.
Do we have three votes already? Yes, no?
We do, so I, I'm gonna vote no. Um, I'm just gonna vote no, it doesn't matter. So, motion carries.
Actually, don't deserve it. That's a little bit rich for my blood.
So.
Thank you, madam.
We got one more.
Yeah, I'm the same one.
Yeah.
Alright, you got another one, right? Eight o'clock.
The lot next to me.
We're only twenty-nine minutes behind. Alright, let's go.
This will be fast.
So our next appeal is parcel number two eight one dot seven seven dot zero one dot zero zero seven. It's located at seventy-six oh eight, South Ridgestone Drive. Um, it is a bare lot. It is twenty thousand, nine hundred and seven square feet. We currently have it assessed at a hundred and twenty thousand, two fifteen. The assessors are recommending no change at its, it is, um, at market value. We do have some comparable, um, lot sales in the neighborhood, or very similar to the neighborhood, um, ranging between a hundred thousand dollars for the lot value, all the way up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for lot values. And these are ranging from two thousand and eighteen sales to two thousand and twenty sales. Currently, the subject property is being assessed at five dollars and seventy-five cents per square foot. The cost is ranging between six dollars and six twenty-one a square feet. The market is indicating a range between five dollars and forty square feet and eight dollars and seventy-five cents a square feet. It's quite the range, but they're different. And I can, um, comp one is smaller than the subject property, but sold for a hundred and twenty thousand. So that's that eight dollars and seventy-five cents a square feet. That's why we do a tiered system, smaller the lots, larger the price per square foot. That's why the appellant is larger lot, lower price per square foot. Um, comps two and three are across the street. They're in a little different type neighborhood, but they're of similar size to the subject property. And that is all I have. I think, uh, it should be noted that the appellant paid, uh, sixty-five thousand for the lot in two thousand and sixteen.
Carla, was it reduced then at county boards?
In two thousand and nineteen, yes, it was.
What was the valuation that you'd placed on it at that point?
No.
No.
We had a hundred and four thousand, five forty.
I've never appealed this land. No.
You know why it was lowered?
It wasn't.
Because of the purchase price. She paid sixty-five for it. It would have been only a three-year-old sale. Uh, it, unless you can remember something.
I didn't appeal this lot, ever.
Ever?
No, I didn't even know the appeal process existed until two years ago, when I first had that gigantic jump on my house.
Wait, wait, wait. I have documents where you appealed it in two thousand and eighteen.
That's the land that my house is on.
That's adjacent lot.
No, that's the other lot. You wanted seventy-eight twelve.
I did find the two thousand and sixteen appeal form as well, ma'am.
What?
This isn't a building.
It's for this parcel number.
It is for this parcel.
With your signature.
Is that your mark?
Alright. Any questions from the board? Any more questions?
I got a very pointed question for you. Um, you didn't object to the land value on your prior one. At the price, but you are objecting on this one. What's your argument, other than it's just too much?
Well, I have never heard that larger lots have a smaller square foot per price. And when I was looking around my neighborhood on that parcel browser, um, I just couldn't understand why these other big, beautiful lots, just two hundred yards south of me, are at two dollars and forty cents. The.
What's not readily transparent is the tiered system.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the total value is, though, and that's what's not shown here. I think if you looked at the total, you would see that the bigger lots are assessed for more and the smaller lots are assessed for less.
But not per square foot.
No. Right.
So the one, but the one that is very close to my house is this twenty-seven oh five West Dalston Circle, which is in Prairie Hills, just like my house. It's in a cul-de-sac. It doesn't have any swampland on it. It's slightly bigger than mine at point six one, but it's three dollars and eighty-five cents per square foot, and mine's five seventy-five. And you know, when I'm just all around there researching, I see something like that, and I say, why is mine two dollars more than that? So I came to ask.
Just out of curiosity, do you, do you own the adjacent lot with all those, uh, evergreen trees in that?
I mean, that's part of my home, that we just, the two million dollar home.
That you just gave.
I mean, to the, adjacent to your tennis court, though.
That's part of, it's a weird line, but that is part of my.
That comes up as part of the home.
That's part of the home.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Madam Chair, in short for time, I would move that we leave the, um, current assessed value, uh, alone at, uh, the recommended from the assessed value of a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Motion carries. Alright.
Getting Alzheimer's.
Thank you for coming in tonight. We will move on to item thirty-two on our agenda, scheduled for eight-ten. I know I was on schedule before you got here.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot one zero dot zero seven dot zero zero nine. It's located at eighteen hundred East Sixty-first Street in Sioux Falls. It's a single-family, um, residence owned by Clifton and Catherine Wilmes. It was built in nineteen ninety-eight. It has one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven square feet, five bedrooms, three bathrooms, lower level finish of one thousand, one hundred and sixty square feet. We have a total assessed value of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one oh two. The assessors are recommending no change as the assessed value is below both cost and market approaches to value uh, with comparable properties. You can see three comparables, all within a sale range date between two thousand and nineteen and October of two thousand and twenty, with a valuation between, or excuse me, a sale price between three hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Felt the most comparable, um, property to the subject was comparable number one, sold in October of two thousand and twenty for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's similar in age, style, um, size as the subject property. Our subject property is being assessed at a dol- a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot. The cost is indicating a range between one sixty-nine and one eighty-one a square foot. The market is indicating a cost range between one seventy-eight and one ninety-eight a square foot. The subject property is in pink and the comparables are in blue. They're in the same neighborhood with the same type of neighborhood-type lots. Yep. Sorry. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, sir, would you just state your name and address and go ahead with your presentation?
My name is Clifton Wilmes, and I live at eighteen hundred East Sixty-first Street. Thank you for, um, allowing me to come before you. This is an educational process. I, uh, never consider myself a poor boy, but after those last few, I realize that maybe I might be. Not really. I've been to Africa twelve times, so, um, I understand the rationale for how you arrived at things. Uh, where I'm coming from is that we purchased the property in December second of two thousand and nineteen. That was only sixteen months ago. And if I could quote my realtor, they say the best comparable is the sale of your own property. So at that time, the property was assessed at two, uh, two hundred and seventy-two thousand and seventeen dollars. And yes, we did purchase it under the assessed value. We knew we had some sweat equity to put into it, basically maintenance things that need to bring it back up to that kind of a value. We don't argue with that assessment there. Part of the education here is, is that, um, we did get this assessment then for two thousand and twenty, uh, three hundred and seven thousand, eight eighty, which is about thirty-five thousand dollars more than the assessed value. Now, uh, this tells you how much little I know about how government works, but, uh, we were advised by our, uh, realtor that make sure that we get our, our current home at that time had not been sold, and said, make sure you get it changed to, um, user occupied. And I thought that that, when we got this assessment of three seventy, three oh seven, eight eighty, that there was an inflated assessment because it wasn't, uh, user occupied. So that tells you how ill-informed I am, but we didn't do anything about that. And I guess that's probably really what it really comes down to it, and is, is the, the problem, the part that we, we have trouble reconciling in our own mind. So, um, I don't know if you have before me the letter that I, um, sent in, but, uh, I just did some calculations where I started with the value of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then I said, well, what if you put in a five point five percent, or six percent, or six and a half percent increase? And then I've calculated that separately so that I compounded it. You know, I just didn't take it times one ten or one twelve, you know, I compounded it. And I don't know what the value of the house ought to be, or the property, but, um, it, it's somewhere in, uh, may I say, less than three-ten in, in my, my way of thinking. And so, um, that's the basic rationale that we have. We don't have, uh, anything fancy as far as, uh, granite, uh, countertops or anything like that. Uh, the things that we've done to the house is paint and, um, fixing the sump pump and, uh, radon mitigation and cleaning out the furnace and had to put the trim, uh, back on the, uh, bottom of the, in the basement because there was, uh, minor water damage. We had, we had the, the, um, walls checked. There was no mold, so we were afraid of buying the house. And so things like that were basically maintenance for that purposes that, I guess, in my mind, it brought it back up to the original assessed value. And how did we go from December second of having assessed value of two seventy-two to in January being three hundred and seven thousand, eight eighty? And that's the figure that gets to be the problem in terms of doing some math. And I, I would hope that you would agree that by me taking a five and a half percent or six percent a year, that I'm trying to be fair with the, with the board here, so.
You stated earlier, sir. You stated earlier, you missed out on electing non-owner, or owner-occupied status.
Well, we have gotten it, we got that change at the time that they said that we were supposed to get it done. But I understood, this is my mistake. I, the reason we didn't challenge that first assessment there in two thousand and twenty is I thought that when we got that owner assessment, owner-occupied, the, the assessment would change, and that's my, my stupidity.
So you went a year with paying the enhanced fee?
Well, it didn't, it wasn't due till later.
Right, you went a year without paying the enhanced fee.
I didn't pay attention to it.
You could make the argument you paid more than what you should have.
Yeah.
For a year.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess, I'm, I'm, uh, would be more than happy if you came and kept the assessment the same or somewhere in that ballpark. To me, that's being, in, in the way I think, that's being fair, but you guys are in the decision-making capacity there.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we value the land at fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-six, and we value the structure at two hundred and sixty thousand.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Sherry, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are on to item number thirty-three. Go ahead, Carla.
Our next appeal is parcel number two eight zero dot nine two dot zero seven dot zero two four. It's located at thirty-one oh one West Old Yankton Road in Sioux Falls. It's a single-family property owned by Larry and Susan Hamry, um, built in two thousand and thirteen. Square footage is two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two square feet. Four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, eighteen hundred and sixty-eight square feet in the lower level. We currently have it assessed at six hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven eighty. It has been assessed at that same value since two thousand and nineteen. Our assessors are recommending no change at it's in line with, uh, the cost and the market approaches to value. Our sales comps are current, twenty-twenty, uh, ranging from seven hundred and seven, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand to eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the, uh, market ranges. The most comparable we felt was in February of twenty-twenty self, sold for seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Our subject property is currently being assessed at two hundred and forty dollars a square foot. The cost ranges between two nineteen and two seventy-two. And the market indicating, uh, price per square foot between two seventy and three oh eight per square foot. You can see our subject property and the three comparables are essentially right across the street or right next door to the subject property. There is a current sale on, uh, the property that sold after November of two thousand and twenty for six oh five. Need to show that, even though it was after the legal assessment date. Still needed to show it to you.
And the appellant did, uh, email some documents this afternoon, and I printed those out and provided those to you, so, their insurance documents.
Any questions from the board? Very brief questions and very brief answers, please.
Is it a valid sale?
Yes.
The six oh five?
Yes.
Okay.
There was an appraisal at the time of the sale that he provided to us. Uh, I don't, we never got to see it, but he did give us the number at local boards as well.
Thank you.
Is the appellant present? Are they on the phone?
Yeah.
Good evening. Go ahead and state your name and then go ahead with your presentation, please.
Yeah, my name is Larry Hamry.
Mr. Hammer, you're gonna need to speak up a little bit.
Is this better?
That's better.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I purchased the property on November thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the property had been the market, uh, in excess of one year on the, uh, multiple listing service in Sioux Falls. I closed on it on the thirtieth of November for a purchase price of six hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, I supplied the replacement cost figures from my insurance, insurance company. Uh, that, that value is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. If you add the, uh, assessment on the lot of ninety-three thousand, two hundred, that would get a, a total replacement of the lot and home at six hundred and twenty thousand. I also, uh, have listed three other comparables that sold within, I think, three or four months of when I purchased the property. They have sold within, I think, three or four months of when I purchased the property. Uh, one on sixty-two twenty South Pinehurst Court. All these properties have, uh, in excess of my square footage. This one has four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven square feet, it sold for five ninety-five thousand dollars. It is assessed at five hundred and forty-five thousand seven ninety. Uh, the other property at five oh one East Saint Andrews Drive, uh, square footage of four thousand five hundred and thirteen, assessed at four hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred. And the third one at eight oh four Watercrest Circle, sold for six hundred and thirty thousand with five thousand one hundred and ninety-seven square feet, assessed at five sixty-one six ten. As I look at the most comparable property you used, uh, that sold for considerably more money, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. It has, uh, one more bedroom, one more bathroom. It has, uh, tandem three-stall garage and a fourth single-stall garage in front for a total of seven-car garage. It has in-floor heat. It has, uh, uh, open deck, it has a cover deck that leads out to a four-season room. It has a pool wet bar in the basement. Uh, it has a large heated in-ground pool with substantial paver patio surrounding. As I look at the evaluations, it would appear that the comps that I use, uh, fit my property much more closely. I do not have a wet bar in the lower level, I do not have in-floor heat, do not have a seven-car garage, and I have, uh, fewer bedrooms and bathrooms. All of the subject properties that I have, uh, shown for comparables are assessed, uh, uh, in excess of a hundred thousand less than my property is currently assessed.
I got one question, sir. Joel Aaron's here, can you hear me?
I sure can, thank you.
Was this an arms-length transaction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to value the land at ninety-three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and to value the structure at five hundred eleven thousand seven eighty.
I'll second that motion.
Yes.
I have a first and a second. Cheryl, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
All right, next item thirty-four, last one on our agenda this evening.
Our next appeal is parcel number zero nine nine, don't, point five one, point zero three, point A zero zero four. It's located at forty-six seven eighty-seven, two hundred and seventy-third Street, T, South Dakota. Um, it is a single-family residence owned by Ernest and Betty Otten. Uh, it was built in nineteen eighty. It has two thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet, four bedrooms, three bathrooms, um, crawl space. We currently have it assessed at two hundred and seventy-three thousand ninety-three dollars, it is one acre. The assessors are recommending no change at as, as it is, um, between cost and market, uh, with our comparables. Uh, next slide. You can see we have some comparables from two thousand and eighteen to June of two thousand and twenty, ranging between two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred to four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of this, uh, sales. Felt the most comparable was comparable number one, sold for four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in June of two thousand and twenty. It is a newer home, um, less square footage. Currently assessed at three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine eleven. Our subject property is currently assessed at ninety-nine dollars a square foot. The cost is indicating a range between a dollar, a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty-six dollars a square foot. The market is indicating a market range between one fifty-three and two hundred and twenty-six dollars a square foot. Uh, one of the, uh, complaints on the assessment was their storage shed. Uh, they didn't feel it was being, um, equally assessed as, uh, other storage sheds in Perry Township. We did give you some comparables on storage sheds that were very similar to the subject property, um, in size and, uh, built, storage sheds. Some additional pictures with their storage shed. Uh, here's a map that shows where the subject property is located in red and the comparable, one of the comparables in blue, just to the east of the subject property. Um, there are other, um, comps that were just to the north of the subject property, comps two and three. There was some indication in regards to, uh, water issues. Uh, we show where the subject property is located with a firm floodplain. Um, also show some flood, um, admin, um, not on the subject property. And then we show a risk. What you don't have is, in your PowerPoint, is in regards to, and I did send this to, uh, the appellant late on Friday, uh, so they're familiar with this. Comp one has, you know, a, a greater flood, um, admin and even a greater risk. Still sold for, you know, the, the sell price that we indicated. So what these are showing is the, the water is not an issue when it comes to market. Um, here's comp two. Flood admin, flood risk. On comp two, it's more so than, once again, on the subject property. Comp three, flood admin, flood risk. It doesn't affect the assess, uh, the sell price. That's why we don't make an adjustment on our assessments for those reasonings.
Thank you, any questions for staff? All right, uh, the appellant's present? Come up and give your presentation.
Carla, did the local board?
I do have a.
Did the local board agree to two sixty-six one eighty-four? And is this an, is, are you appealing or are they appealing?
They are appealing the local board's decision.
Of two sixty-six? Okay, okay.
Okay.
Do you want a copy of this? Jake's coming up. And I brought two just in case. There we go. Okay, very good. Well, I made copies of my PowerPoint. Uh, I want to thank all of you for, um, having us again tonight. Um, Ernie couldn't be here. Oh, I'm sorry, Betty Otten, Ernie Otten, four six seven eight seven, two seventy-third Street in T. Uh, thank you for redoing our, uh, thing from Thursday because Ernie wasn't going to be here, but. Um, so I put this together, um, and you should have a copy of it in front of you as well. Um, and so we are appealing, um, the ag building assessment and we're appealing the land assessment.
I just want to clarify something before we get started. Um, I'm showing the requested land value that you're, the land value that you're requesting is forty-two thousand, the structure value, two hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for a total value of two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, is that correct?
I'm, we're just here tonight to do the ag building assessment and the land assessment. We went through our local board already.
So you're, actually, you're appealing the value of the land that we have set at forty-two thousand?
Correct.
And also the ag building at sixteen thousand three hundred and seven?
Correct.
So, so what is the requested value that you're wanting to place on the land? Because I don't have that in front of me.
Um, can I just go through my PowerPoint?
Um, well, we'd kind of just, they're gonna be crunching numbers the whole time you're talking, so.
Well, um, because there's a reason that we're, uh, we were told that, uh, Lincoln County sets it at forty-two thousand and there's no, and there's no appeal for it, but that's not right on our, on our total land.
Okay, so what are you suggesting that it be?
Well, um, if I can go through this, we can, I, I, I really don't know. It should be, we've been denied the use of our land because of the farmers around us, because of their drainage, their water issues, their tiling issues. And so just, um, we've had numerous things happen on our property because of what's going on around us. It's not just natural water.
All right, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, this is, um, our outbuilding assessment. We were told that when we went through the local board at Perry, that we had to start from scratch. So I'm just starting from scratch. Our outbuilding assessment is not equal or fair as compared to what we were told here, that, um, it's, um, not, it, it's not equal in relation, um, and that's why we're doing this. Um, this is our land. This is, um, Ernie's, uh, mom and dad bought this property, um, uh, way back when and divided it up. So the one that's way on the left for zero dollars, um, is, is I can find on any of these, um, uh, he was not assessed for the land or for that outbuilding. Um, ours is right in front of you, that was put at, down at sixteen thousand three oh seven. Uh, the one right next door to us is his sister and brother-in-laws, um, and that was ninety-three ninety-eight. And then the other one was fifty-four fifty-three. And then way over to the, um, far right, um, was ninety-eight zero five. So I was like, how the heck can you come up with that kind of a, um, an assessment on our fa, on our building when I went all the way around us and there's no outbuilding assessment that I can find here on either one of those? Neither one of those? And those are all the way around us. Uh, the local, uh, when we went through the, um, Perry Township, they, um, recommended that we be lowered to our next-door neighbor, which is his sister and brother-in-law for the ninety-three ninety-eight. When I talked with Carla, she said, no, we have to start from scratch and they're not going to accept that. So this is why I'm starting here.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, and I don't want to argue the fact, but I'm looking at your PT seventeen. And on that, it says, I believe the correct full and true value of said property on legal assessment date was two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for a total value with the land and the building value at two fourteen seven eighty-six. So the way that I'm reading is this, is that you're only appealing that other structure.
And the land.
Okay, but that's not what your appeal form says. Am I?
It did when I.
So what she, I think what she's trying to explain, if I may.
Yes, please.
So she went to the board.
We did, yes.
The local Board of Equalization. Her appeal was in regards to the accessory structure. When we talked, she, she sent me an email and Betty sent me an email and she goes, I heard that we have to start from the beginning. And I said, yes, county appeals are heard de novo, which is from the beginning. So what she's trying to address to the board tonight, this evening, is from the beginning. She wants to appeal more than what she appealed to the local board, is that correct?
No, it's just, it's the same. We were, we were, the, the ag building, they agreed to the ninety-three ninety-eight from the sixteen thousand. And then they, when we appealed the land at four two thousand, they said that we couldn't because it was set in stone. And it's like, we didn't agree with that at all. So no, we're real, we're doing the same two items, basically.
And just to clarify some of her information on here, we're, we're not assessing the accessory buildings. We are, it's, it may be in that total assessment. One of them was listed as a garage on our assessment. We didn't classify it as an accessory building, but it's being valued. It's being valued.
Did you guys have pretty extensive hearing at the local level?
We did.
And you explained all this to them?
We did.
And then they asked you questions?
They did.
And then they came out with a decision of two sixty-six one eighty-four?
Uh, um, all I remember is them telling me that they would lower that sixteen thousand dollar ag building to ninety-three ninety-eight.
Right, so they had a full opportunity to figure this out, figure the math out.
Correct.
Okay, I've got a motion to make, but I don't want to step on other commissioners' toes if they have questions.
Are there any questions?
Well, I still want to talk about the land value, though. I'm not done.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. Where do you want the land value set?
Yeah, at from forty-two thousand to what, Betty?
Well, can I just go through here and then we can discuss that? Because I think that there's some aggravating factors here.
You still gotta give us a number, Betty.
Yes, and I, I, I don't really know.
And you already gave us the number in your PT seventeen, so what's?
PT seventeen, what is that?
That's your objection form that you filled out. That's your appeal form.
Okay.
You said the true and full value of that land, you believe to be at forty-two thousand dollars. So are you changing your position on that?
Yes.
Okay, and what is?
And we did that at the local board as well. So I guess I just was confused on how to fill that form out because we've never done this either.
Okay, well, we've, I don't think we're gonna bet against ourself, I guess, that's, that's my point. What's your number for the land?
Well, I think it should be at least three-quarters of what it is, if not half. And if I can continue, we can go on with that.
You sure can, no, thank you.
Okay, so we're appealing this because the assessments to ta, um, uh, I was told, or through Cheryl, that they do not take in consideration, as Carla said, the water flow on the property is abnormal because the county has had many sales with ponding areas or floodplains on properties and they still bring comparable market value. However, um, if we go on with that, um, we believe that we have been denied the use of our own property without, uh, any regard from our farming neighbors and request a reduced land value assessment for compensation to move the decrease in our property assessments to the neighboring farmers who have caused the issue. Um, we did not have water issues that four of our family property owners now face. And we've lived on this property as a family since nineteen sixty-nine. Um, Ernie and I have lived on this property for almost forty years. Our farming neighbors have created a lot of farming flooding problems as well as many others south and east of us. Complaints have been filed, testimony was given right here at the Lincoln County Drainage Boards, and yet nothing has been done to stop the lawlessness of what's going on. And you might say, well, this is certainly not the wrong, the right venue to present this. However, as I said, um, we followed, um, and many other people have followed what the law states that we're supposed to do, but filing complaints, testimony at water boards, the drainage boards, and nothing has been done. So we're being denied the use of our own property. There is a real difference between man-made water versus natural drainage. We understand that. We have, our own property has a high water level, that's why we can't have a basement in it. Um, we, um, and as I go through there, um, uh, it's, uh, corrupt not to be, uh, not to speak out and fail to speak out, um, against decency and justice and lawlessness, a state where there is widespread want, wrongdoing and disregard for rules and authority, which I think, uh, happens a lot here in Lincoln County. Um, Tom Stangram came before this board. Um, the last time was the Drainage Board on September first, and you can look at me all, all you want to. We, we understand that there's comp, there's, that there's things to be, you know, we understand, you know, so look at me all you want, but, uh, so he was before the Drainage Board right here and, um, uh, Commissioner Gibbons was not here, uh, one day on September. Uh, one day on September first, before leaving to serve in Bahrain, and he's still stationed there. Um, he was talking about, he had all kinds of pictures and stuff that he was flooded out, which is a half a mile east of the Parker Interstate exit and southeast of Lex, um, Electric. Um, there was no, no video testimony, so I ended up getting, um, the link, um, from the Auditor's Office. Um, and among other things, he brought up the November twenty-fourteen approved water study, which was never done and has never been funded by the county. He expounded again on the installed drail, uh, drain tiling, development companies, et cetera, getting away with letting all their excess water drain downstream unfettered. He related that Lincoln County shut down their road after just one inch of rain. And as of two days ago, when I talked to him, nothing has been done to correct or fix their drainage, drainage issues either. Um, there's a drainage case that came before South Dakota law, um, uh, that you cannot change the drainage, um, um, from one upper land, landowner may not transfer the burdens imposed by nature on his land to that of the lower owner. Then there's codified law, which, um, makes this Drainage Board through Lincoln County Commissioners responsible for controlling the county's drainage issues. Um, uh, there was a landowner that put in drail, uh, drain tile that went, all of, all the drainage went to the west end, which, um, goes downstream to us across. We never, um, we were never given permission. We were never done anything. Um, several complaints have been filed, uh, regarding flooding and a formal complaint was filed for filling in wetlands. Um, and again, nothing has ever been done.
Um, I'm sorry, I'd like you to address your property specifically.
I'm doing it right now.
Thank you.
Um, it was about five years ago, a neighbor put in drain tile with no permission from the adjacent landowners. Uh, we also understand that tree, T also drains into this field, which adds excess water to our own properties. Um, other farming practices have also caused excessive water drain onto our family. And wetlands have also illegally been filled in. Um, this is a picture of our property and that, you can see that, um, that, that was the natural drainage drought through our property, always has been, always will be. And then right below that is where we had, um, a huge garden. Well, when all this water started coming through our property, um, in July of twenty-twenty, last year, um, Chris Loads took out six of our full-sized, um, shade trees as they were dying. He said they were not diseased, none of them were diseased, um, but their roots were flooded and couldn't breathe and also had to remove our big mountain ash in our front yard as their roots were also flooded. You can see, um, the places that all those, um, huge trees had been taken out. Um, this is also, um, on the third picture over, is where all this natural water has made its own, um, uh, the water that has started coming through has made its own way through the, through both of our properties now. Um, we had to remove an outdoor clothesline, which I absolutely loved all the time because the ground became too soggy. We couldn't use their walk-in on, and it was extremely hard to, um, let go of. Um, the use of our garden was taken away. We had to, um, um, Ernie built, Ashley built me uprights to grow our vegetables for canning because the, the, um, the garden would never, it would never dry out. And then that new drainage field, um, created itself between our properties by the excess water. Um, and then it goes back into, um, a back farmer's lot, um, that stops him from, um, renting out a particular portion too. And in our front yard, we had to reseed twice and then we held in two truckloads of dirt, um, and then reseeded again. And in spring of this year, our, our excess water still runs over our properties and into the back owner's field for the new drainage. So, this is, um, right next door. This is the same thing, uh, for Penny Gale, his sister. And then this is way at the end, where it's his brother, um, right at the very end of that, um, eight acres. Um, Lincoln County originally gave permission for, um, his mom and dad to build on this one acre and now it's unsuitable for building. This is right off of the Lincoln County website that it's not suitable.
Again, I want to keep this about just your property.
Well, I understand that, but though, all these people were told, our whole family was told that they, they had to pay the forty-two thousand dollars an acre because it was written in stone. Well, when you can't even use your own property and yet you're being, um, uh, assessed almost fifty thousand dollars, uh, for a, a property that you can't even build on, that's, or use or plant, um, that's ridiculous. So, um, that's my, that's my pitch.
Thank you.
I have a-
Any-
I have a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
But I'm not going to step on other commissioners' questions.
Are there questions for staff or the appellant from the board? If, if not, if not, um, Joel, you had a motion or a question?
I have a motion.
Alright, go ahead.
So, uh, my motion is the following, and just so you know, earlier when I said I had a motion, it was based on the presumption that you made an admission in your document, appeal of the forty-two thousand. Because typically, that's what we use to determine people admitting or saying what they think their value should be. And what I heard you say is you said you were a little confused by it. But then also, as you went along in your presentation, I additionally considered the evidence about the drainage issues as well. So, with that said, uh, my motion is to value the land at forty-two thousand and to value the structures, uh, both the house and the outbuildings at two hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars. And that would, uh, sustain the local board's decision.
Is that reducing the ag building then? Is that what you're saying?
It's conjoining them.
Okay.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Will you repeat that number again, please? Clarification?
Forty-two thousand for the land, two thousand two hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty-four for the structures. And that is sustaining the local board's decision.
So, we're not going to differentiate between the building and the house?
Nope, I'm conjoining the two structures.
Put them together.
That's, that's the, that's what the local board said. I'm sustaining the local board's decision.
I have a motion and a second. Everybody's clear on it? Cheryl, you go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
I'm going to abstain. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to go into recess until Thursday at nine AM or eight-thirty, Cheryl.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
So, is Gibbon?
Yes, right on the, it's right-
I think County Consolidated Board is in the morning.
I don't think that's what I'm- I do not know.